And. Kalu Fitzmane will join us for study or just for a regular?
Um, he said he would be en route to the city, so I'm not sure if it'll be like zoom for one and then in person for another. But he did, I think, intend to leave himself.
Okay, that's what I got from the email, so hopefully. Well, like, who is the other person? All right, we'll call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is November first, two thousand and twenty-two. It is four thirty P M. And we are in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We will excuse Councilman Fitzmanu. Until he joins us, you may be late. We have Councilman Wedstone on Zoom and all of their members are present. We're joined at the tables with Mr. Pyle, our city manager, and Ms. Kamic, our city recorder. Uh, we now have the approval of our minutes. From October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, I'll turn it to the council for discussion or a motion on the minutes.
Don't you approve minutes of October twenty-fifth? Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and those are approved. Um, we'll go to our regular meeting. Do we have any additions or changes, Mr. Pyle?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Awards and proclamations. We have the World Suicide Prevention Day. Anyone want to read that? Or do we just want to announce it? And we do not have to vote on it.
I'll read it.
You'll read it? Okay.
Next week?
Yes, well. Yeah, on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right, that.
And then we have our public hearing, which is our second week of studying application Z P Z eight, two thousand and twenty-two. It looks like there's no additional information. Does the council have any questions or need any other information? Seeing none then there. That will also be on the agenda for the fifteenth. We'll move to our communications. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Bunderson for our parking ordinance discussion.
Thank you, Mary Council. We'll get the screen shared here. So I'm finally back with the changes that the council requested that we make the last time, uh, from the last time I was here. And so if you recall, the council had asked me to change the fine structure, and I think we are all fine with that when we went through the initial ordinance, which is we would speed this over a little.
So, Eric, can you remind us what date that date that was we made the last changes?
Well, we haven't made any changes yet.
I mean, previous.
Oh. I can find that out for you. I don't.
Okay, not within the last year.
No, it's not been within the last year or two. Yeah.
Nine fifteen. You feel calm says.
Okay. I think that's when I just typed it up for this. If if this all goes, I guess, according to plan, the issue paper that I bring in front of you for the actual consideration, I'll have all that stuff.
Okay.
But I do think it was a year or two ago.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, but back to the review. What we had talked about last time was to make it a first offense, second offense, third offense, and fourth offense type situation where we would progressively raise the the fines for repeat offenders. I think everybody was okay with that. And so what we wanted to do is move on and talk about two other issues that the city was having. The first one was, uh, the recreational vehicles parked in front of uh, residential areas, and there were some concerns there. And so what we did is we went back and we made this little. Um. It's in the other one, sorry. We made this little. Here it is. We made this little affirmative defense. So what we're what we're asking the council consider is this, that we are allowed to give tickets for recreational vehicles parked in front of somebody's house. But the parking officers will check to see if the vehicle is registered to the house or if the vehicle is being loaded. And if either of those things are true, they the people won't get the ticket. And then even if you have a vehicle registered, let's say you have a house in Idaho and you register the RV in Idaho and you get the ticket. What affirmative defense means is that upon appeal, if you prove that, if you prove, yeah, this is just my second house, or I live there, um, to to the appeals process, we will also dismiss the ticket. And that should solve probably ninety-nine percent of the concern that we have and still address the issue that we have with the motor vehicles being parked around the city. So that's our that's our proposal. Do you have any questions about that?
Any questions from the council? So my question is, why are we getting away from the twenty-four hours and a forty-eight hour period?
Because as as I understand, that was just really hard to enforce. That was our guys chasing um, motor homes around the the city.
So I was notified that in August, we were giving out tickets for vehicles that maybe they were doing some side work on their side yard.
Mm-hmm.
Pulled the recreation vehicle out. It was only there six hours, not twenty-four, and they still got a ticket.
And, yeah, I don't know about those cases.
So why would our parking people be doing that?
I don't know.
I mean, I told the person that had told me about it to appeal it.
Right.
But that's not even.
Yeah, that's and and I I think this just gets away from that whole situation. If if the if the vehicle is registered to the physical address on the house, they don't get the ticket. It's affirmative defense.
There's another reason that we would ask you to consider this, too, is which one a part of our uh, enforcement of other activities around the city where people would be living in motor homes and moving them around from street to street are not. We're not effectively able to enforce the ordinance because of the twenty-four hour. Because they just move it half a block or another block around.
Okay, I just have pause penalizing our residents for criminal acts of non-residents. So, okay.
How does affirmative defense, it wouldn't be?
Not everybody understands they can appeal though.
They wouldn't even get it if it were registered at that home.
Right. But if they do get it, they still have to appeal to us and take time off work and everything else to do that.
Well, they can do it all online. The appeal.
But does online work? Because I tried to register a pet and it's been down for six months.
Well, that's a different system.
But I'm just saying, we're not, we don't have a great track record, is all I'm saying. So.
Yeah, I I think the parking tickets have, from what I understand, because that I coordinate that in my office and we get a lot of those appeals on a weekly basis.
Okay, and they're through the internet and they work pretty smoothly.
And we also have a, if if someone doesn't have the internet and they need to come in, the finance people set them up a little computer right there and walk them through the process on how to do it.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Lars, did you have a question? Sorry.
Yeah, the all that information is on that ticket.
Yeah.
What about, um, renters? So the renting a house, they also own an RV. And their RV, if they pull it out front, when the parking enforcement officer comes in and says, oh, they're an RV in front, it's not registered to the owner of the house because they're renting.
Right.
How does that?
So they would just the way the way that.
You'd have to go come back and prove that this is my address, this bill has been sent to this address, or however you want to prove.
But on the registration, it says the address.
Registration of the RV.
Yes.
Oh, that's true.
Right?
So that would.
So they're not checking ownership of the house.
They're just checking it.
They're checking registration of the.
It's the same location.
Yeah, if it's a person who's been renting there for like more than a year and gone through the cycle, it would it would show up on the registration as the physical address. And and again, the the safety valve that we've written into this, and I understand appealing something is a pain in the butt. It's not that big a pain in the butt in 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 our case. You could do it from your phone and um, and that would be an affirmative defense that live there. So so that's the that's the motorhome part. And the other part that I feel like I didn't explain well to you last time, that I kind of want to almost reset our thinking on, is the commercial vehicles in the residential areas. So I'm going to show you some pictures in this in this folder labeled trucks of what we think and what we're going to recommend that we clearly prohibit. And thi- this is the top one, because um, as you recall, the problem that we had before is that we were we were trying to enforce on gross vehicle weight. And that's the actual weight. And our officers don't have a way of determining an actual weight besides taking that down to the weigh station and weighing it. So our idea is that we change the 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 standard to gross. Let me get the words right.
Weight rating?
Gross vehicle weight rating. And what that does is allow the parking officer and everyone, including the person who gets the ticket, to get on the same page, because you can just go look that up on your vehicle. And essentially, as I looked at it tonight, that is a Ford F five fifty and above, which would be prohibited. So let me back up a little. So that gross vehicle weight rating um, is split into these different classes of vehicles. And by the way, um, props to Aaron Crim, who created this beautiful design for us. Um, he did a really good job. It's very clear. So what we're what we're proposing is that we take class four and higher and prohibit those from parking on the residential streets. Obviously, these class eight and class sevens and class sixes are kind of no brainers. The class fours are these type of vehicles. And we go back to the pictures. These type of vehicles and we get a lot of complaints on these vehicles, and this is where we have the trouble with enforcement. So what we're proposing is that we ban these and heavier gross vehicle weight rating. And we carve out per your concerns last time. I have the question marks there, uh, that our our recommendation would be the fourteen thousand pounds and above. But what we could, what we do is we carve out recreational vehicles driven fully solely as a family or personal conveyance. And that is if somebody has converted a semi truck, which I've seen before, into an RV, you could still allow that. Vehicles owned by the state or local government, this is the bus issue. Um, I or other type of uh, vehicles and then firefighting emergency vehicles operated by emergency personnel, not including commercial tow trucks. So I I I can't imagine a case where our firefighters would uh, get a ticket from our parking enforcement people. Um, but I I'm I'm surprised daily. So that that would be what I would propose, and and I've been working with the police and um, and code enforcement and Steve Pastrick to to um, to come up with that definition. Now, the other thing that I would that I would propose that we do with this is that we um, we make the commercial vehicles and the parking on the driveways the same weights. Because right now you can park a heavier car, I think, on the street than your driveway or vice versa, and that 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 gets confusing for our residents. So we will, we will, what we really want is a very clean way to tell all of our residents that vehicles over fourteen thousand and one pounds gross vehicle weight rating are not allowed in residential areas. And that's what we'd like to do. Now, council can um, council can move that up or or down. I've kind of written the the ordinances in such a way that you just fill in that number. But that that is the easiest way for us to enforce it, and I believe the easiest way for our residents to be able to uh, know what is prohibited. Sir.
Don't see a tow truck anywhere. At least if you were scanning through.
In the pictures?
Yeah.
Oh, there was one in the pictures.
In the pictures, there are.
Yeah.
The rollback on the of chart.
Oh. Oh. Well, the the pictures are illustrative of those type of vehicles. The tow truck would fit in the class four or class five or class six.
Okay.
Yeah, I should have had Aaron put one in there.
Because I noticed one in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
It was on the main road, but as soon as I turned a corner, it was right there in front of me.
Yeah.
Cutting out a lane of traffic, actually.
Yeah, that's that's the beauty of the gross vehicle weight rating is any vehicle has that number. And you can look it up. So I I imagine all tow trucks are above that.
Right, the roll.
Class four. Yeah, because they'd have to be able to hold. Yeah.
I think my only concern for now is the heavy duty pickups. So what if my neighbor gets a F five fifty to pull their fifth wheel?
That's not a commercial.
It's not commercial.
But it's ninety percent going to probably be a duly.
And that would probably be a recreational vehicle driven solely as a family or personal conveyance for non-commercial purposes.
So again, they're gonna have to prove that.
Well, I mean, I I don't, if if it's a, if it's just a.
Vehicle for family conveyance.
Yeah. For for towing your boat, if it, if you don't have your contractor or business um, signage on the side and it's, you know.
You could just add a fourth sub there, just basically differentiated between recreational vehicle, but the rest of the language.
Okay.
If if that's.
Yeah.
If that gets to what, uh.
I think so.
Councilman Wedstone has a comment. Okay, Councilman Wedstone? Thank you.
Yes, I just had a question on the class six. It looked like um, one of the pickup trucks just had a rack, and I don't know, maybe that's a a larger truck and you just didn't have a graphic to show that. But just by putting a rack on, does that classify it as a class six?
No, that would be that would be an F, uh, like an F six fifty or an X seven fifty with a giant rack that would carry like glass or um, beams or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that just nor nor like your your F one fifty through uh, even four fifties, using them as, you know, any anything people can dream up to to do those would be above and allowed, even if they were a commercial vehicle. So contractors can drive their F three fifty, um, electricians who who are issued a truck, all that kind of stuff. They can still drive those.
So there's some vehicles there under class three that I would think we wouldn't want.
Some lighter uh, box trucks and delivery trucks?
Yeah.
Uh, we we could certainly move it up. Uh, that the the problem is then we get into the F three fifty sort of the electricians kind of um, kind of uh, issued trucks. So again, this is the vehicle we get the most complaints about, this literal actual vehicle. And the gross vehicle weight rating on this would would be a type four and would be prohibited. So anything smaller than that would be allowed. This were, I guess, one size smaller. Yeah, and the council could certainly uh, up that number, but I think then we you'd you'd get some pushback from.
Yeah, so your Amazon, uh, oh. Cargo van or cargo van, not a cargo van, but.
This little Sprinter van? Yeah, I think that's well within the.
That many of them are using right now.
Do people park those in their neighborhoods overnight? Or do those go back to the?
I think they take them all. I think they they have.
Yeah.
They.
That might be a class three vehicle.
The way they deliver, I don't think they'd be parked very long in anyone's spot.
I think so.
But those would be, uh, you know, a Sprinter like that would be allowed.
Yeah.
Be a recreational vehicle.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Sprinter for private use. Yeah, that's what we tried to cover is, you know, all the fun things that people do with their big vehicles. Uh, but but try to address those complaints and tickets that we get throughout city during the course of the, you know, of the of the weeks and the months that we've been doing this.
So one of the complaints I have received over the couple of years is the F one fifty that has a trailer with lawn mowers on it, pulls up in front of a yard, mowing the lawn, and they get a ticket.
Mm-hmm.
So this would not happen anymore. Unless they had a five fifty or above. Where this would still happen. Because I've.
Well, I think it would depend.
There are people that will not do business in West Valley.
Right, I I think it would depend on the weight of that vehicle and trailer combination, the gross vehicle weight rating. So an F five fifty with a um, with a trailer with little push lawn mowers on it? I don't know, maybe, Colleen, do you have any? I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you have any idea on that?
We do our best to teach appropriate discretion and common sense, and sometimes we fail.
Yeah, I think, but I but it it seems like under this definition and that that vehicle would not get a ticket.
Okay, so if you have a three fifty or a one fifty and you have the trailer, it's not going to be an issue anymore?
If it doesn't, depending on the weight limit that the council decides to put on that.
So how would we know what the weight weight, we know the truck.
We know the truck.
So how would we determine the weight limit of the trailer? Or the combination of those?
I think you'd have to look up the trailer, because again, that 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 um, that weight limit comes from the manufacturer. We're not worried about what's on top of it. We're worried about the amount that it can hold.
So.
So you'd so you would have to know that the parking enforcement officer would have to know the gross vehicle weight rating of that trailer.
So how are we going to get that information to them? It's kind of like last week, you know, how do we teach them what a finished plant finishes off that? When I was.
Yeah.
Before I was even married, I worked in a manufacturing where we built trailers, high-pressure cleaning system trailers.
Mm-hmm.
There's no way anybody could look up that gross weight because we never published it anywhere. So there's, I mean, that's kind of that. How do you guess that?
Yeah. Well, I tell you what, I'll uh, I will go back and before I bring this to the council as an actual item.
Okay.
I will look into how we're going to do that and propose something to you the next time I bring it up.
Okay.
But I would I would recommend, just because, you know, we've been sitting on it for so long, especially the fines, that I bring it as an actual agenda item with that information for you.
Why don't we do overnight instead of they they leave, you know, basics we have right now, people, they do business and they cannot run business here in in city. So just we give the fire ticket to the people overnight. I think people, they worry this, residents, they worry about overnight parking in front of their house, a big truck, a big trailer or big van. Is it?
Well.
Eight eight times, they they do business and then they just move on, they get to cut the grass and then move on. Why don't just do overnight instead of a daytime?
I think I think it just becomes an enforcement issue. Um.
Well, you got a report from the resident. So while that vehicle parked in my house a couple of days already overnight, why don't you come over here and take a look at, you know what I'm saying? And they will see, and we're going to send officer over there and see if they're still there for the third, you know what? If we give them a ticket instead of they do business and they daily basics, and then we give them ticket that it's kind of a unreasonable. They walk in a door, they give something, and they walk out, they got ticket, you know what I'm saying? Or they along, they finish along, they come back, they see the tickets and the windshield.
I I.
Tough for them.
I think what we're proposing, though, based on, especially on the class four and above, those are pretty darn big trucks. I don't think those are kind of your daily doing business trucks, like an electrician who has come to work on your house or something. And I think the other problem with waiting for the overnight is just the like, I think we have four officer, uh, parking compliance officers trying to cover the whole city. So going back and forth might make that difficult for them. We could certainly write it into the um, write it into the code if that's what the council wants, but I think that's the reason that we're going to do that.
If it's similar to concrete truck, they the houses, you know, one of the houses, they hold a lot of concrete, and then the ladies, she messed it up. And so it's have a cost supervisor came over to take care of that matter, took a couple of hours or something. If that case, uh, enforcement officer came by and and saw that they've been there for a few hours, you know what I'm saying? Resolve that problem.
Yeah.
Give a ticket to that, give a ticket to that.
To the concrete truck.
It's a truck, see that the big problem.
They did give a ticket, you're saying?
I know, no, they didn't do it.
Oh, I was just saying in your example.
Example, yeah, if if that the case.
Yeah, I I I think our, I mean, it's like, uh, Chief Jacob said, I I our our code or sorry, I quoted for a second, our parking compliance officers um, are are pretty well trained to not give a ticket to somebody in the middle of a concrete pour or something like that. I think that's a I think they, I think they are very, they use their discretion well on that. I haven't seen a ticket appeal for that.
You know, but you know, it's only one concrete truck, about three or four concrete truck, they light up something like that, and
Mm-hmm.
Cars are problem. I don't know, that's that what I'm or I'll try to throw it out.
Yeah, yeah. It is not a problem that I have personally seen, but I understand what you're saying.
I don't think I would see a three or four load concrete pour in a residential area in most cases, people.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know enough about pouring concrete.
Follow each other in, and each one's eighteen cubic feet of concrete, so.
Yeah.
I saw that, Don.
You would be surprised, Don.
Well, unless they're building a a bunch of houses in the in the area, then it would be construction.
Right, some division they they have that.
So I still have issue with actively engaged in loading and unloading.
Back on the RVs?
Yep.
Okay.
Just because if you're doing a new concrete park or in the backyard, you have them pulled out during the day, so you can have them excavating or do whatever. You're not unloading and loading, you're moving your personal property out onto the road long enough to do a job, put it back at night. So to have an officer stand there and watch whether they're loading and unloading, to me, is a waste of time. And then second, it's that's not the only reason you may have to put it out there. We don't have extra wide driveways. We don't have extra long driveways. We've done a lot of our zoning so tight that the road is the only place you can put it while you're doing a project like that. So I'm still not comfortable with that actively engaged in loading and unloading after the calls I got this summer.
What do you recommend?
Um, if it belongs to the property, if the registration and the house, then twenty-four hours, I mean, I think they could bring it out in the day, put it back at night, maybe, maybe not. And I don't know if you call in and get a special permit. I mean, I don't know how you do that when it's attached to the property, when you have a project like that. But and I don't think our goal is to be a burden on our residents. It is to keep the unlawful people. And I think that's what this needs to be focused more on is the RVs that are not attached to the property.
So change to.
I would just delete forty-three. And if it's legally registered to that property, and I don't know what a reasonable amount of time is. I mean, we just had somebody get a new driveway and approach. And their contractor had their. And their contractor had their driveway torn up for three weeks before concrete with the shortage of whatevers. And a code officer did say, I can give them a ticket for having that driveway torn up. To someone across the street he was talking to about a different. So that was code enforcement saying he could nail him for that, even though he could tell they were in the process. So. That's the thing that's kind of got me a little too concerned is those kind of comments. And they had to pull their stuff out.
Sorry.
Sorry, anyway.
Forty-three is, is not a restriction. It's, it's a, it's saying you could use this as a defense. So if we take that out, then. Then we're taking away loading and unloading as a defense.
Right, but they can park the twenty-four hours. Well, I still want the twenty-four hours in a forty-eight hour period, but. Left in there.
Oh. Well, I can, I can, I, I know the council wants the fines, uh, and we probably want to push that through. I can bring it, bring it back. And then if we've. If we can't figure that out or we, you, you can't get the votes on that, um, you can certainly take the, the. Ordinance piecemeal and just do the fines or do the fines in the commercial vehicles and keep working on this. I, I know this has been a problem. With uh enforcement and that's why we brought it to you.
I'm just thinking, you know. We had our driveway report this summer because of the damage to the house that was occurred last spring. And they told us when they'd be there. They, they took up the driveway, you know, partially. We just parked our, our cars at neighbors and things like that. All we had was cars. We didn't have a recreational vehicle. We needed to get in and out all the time. But uh. I think it was parked on the street for less than twenty-four hours and twenty-five feet of the physical address. You know, they shouldn't. We might say. Four up to twenty-four hours, something like that rather than less than. Actively engaged in loading or unloading, that would take care of the, the ones that pull up or unloading and that and. And uh, then putting their vehicle away.
Yeah.
So I think it stands pretty good for me, but. I don't have great big. Vehicles either.
Yeah, and then after it's poured, you leave out a week to cure before you drive on it.
Mm hmm.
So. That's the whole, I mean. So some people have to park on the street for more than a week, even after it's poured, just to let it cure before they put things back where they belong. Especially if they're doing the RV pad.
Good, good neighbors, just small cars.
Not everybody's that lucky.
Yeah, if you don't have a good neighbor.
Well, some don't have families, some don't have neighbors with big enough driveways for them to store it in either.
They park in front of the neighbor's houses.
But on the street, yeah. But if it was an RV, there would have been a problem.
Well, that's when they should go camping.
I like it.
Well, September school was in, they didn't have time off, whatever. I just think there's a lot of. We're trying to solve a problem of people living in their vehicles and moving from spot to spot. And if we overthink that one and become such a burden on the residents. When they have special things like this. But I don't know how you.
The ones that are moving from spot to spot aren't registered at the place they're parked.
Correct. Well, and that's why, yeah, that's why I'm wondering why we're changing all this.
But uh, we, we don't want, that, that's not the only thing we're trying to solve, right? I mean. We don't want trailers left on the street.
No.
Um, you know, whether they're a camper trailer or a cargo trailer. So if, if, if they have to be on the street for a week, I, I don't know that. There's other places they can park.
Pick me a list. Then I'll hand it out. That's just my problem. I don't know how to solve these problems when I get the calls. And I agree. Trailers parked on the street year round are big, not secured, but a hazard for. Being able to see kids darting out into the road. I mean, I don't like on-street parking of even cars, but.
Right.
That's never gonna happen, that everybody can put them in their driveway in their garage. Child safety is my number one thing, and that's why. I can see both sides. You know, we have this project, so I don't know if we say, if you're gonna have a project like that, come to the city. Or have the parking person go and say, how long is this going to go on for? And give out like a permit for special permit type things. Because I agree, it's a safety issue having them on the road all the time.
What if I added a third affirmative defense? Um, so that could be kind of a catchall for the. Appeal judge, something like, or due to special circumstances as determined by the.
Temporary.
Yeah, temporary special circumstances as determined by the parking um compliance appeal officer. I try something like that.
Something to do with, yeah, construction or something.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how you take care of both things.
Yeah.
I think that's probably fine. I think we're probably talking about five cases a year that that would. Possibly they would get caught with a ticket, you know? And so I think for five cases, I think it's probably a good way to handle it.
All right, well.
People are abusing it. We can look at it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we will, uh, we'll get this on the agenda and bring it to you with those changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody have questions with the council calendar?
He talked about them for a second.
You want, you have more questions on the fines?
I just wonder why.
Sorry, sorry.
Parking in a disabled parking stall and I realize the severity of that need. But why wouldn't a first offense be as a fancy parking unit?
Can you bring it back? Uh, Ken?
So. I may be wrong, but I thought the disabled parking was a state fine, set by the state, but I could be wrong on that. So let's let Mr. Bunderson answer that.
All right, I'm gonna get. To find. This one right here.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. Why would a first offense? Not be as egregious as a parking, uh, disabled parking stall?
I don't know. I didn't look it into that. I did, I did think that uh the particularly disabled parking stalls was a state. Violation, uh, but I will, I will look into that as well.
I'm just saying, you know, the first offense, even though it isn't. Under handicap or ADA.
Mm hmm.
But it could be just as egregious to neighbors and people trying to get up and down that street. As somebody parked in a disabled stall.
So you're saying the.
Why is it only a hundred and twenty-eight instead of?
Oh, instead of being the same cost as the disabled, the first offense?
Yeah.
Oh.
If we're gonna cut down on the offenses. Just like Mr. Markham says, we've got to hit the more that, where it hurts and. You know, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars for some is a lot less than renting a parking area.
And if the council wants to raise those.
That's just my thought.
We certainly could, could put that in there.
So you're saying we should raise first month, first offense, I mean.
It should be at least.
Two, two hundred and thirteen dollars.
Should be at least as bad as parking in a. Handicap stall.
Don't we cut that in half or something?
Yeah, we, we'd take a huge discount off that for the people who pay within the first ten days, I think.
It's a hundred dollars off.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna do first offense at two thirteen and wouldn't second offense be even higher?
Mm hmm.
So you're.
So you're saying to take the whole.
Them all up.
Bump them all up.
I'm not as comfortable with that.
I, I think this is high enough.
Yeah. I can send you the emails that say that twenty-eight dollars is a burden too. I've got plenty of those in the inbox.
Sure we do. If twenty-eight dollars is a burden, don't illegally park.
Oh, they've been educated and they'll never do it again, but. So on the second offense, do we do the same thing or do we have them pay the entire amount? Do we give a hundred dollar discount?
We've never done this before. Our plan was that we would.
You would?
That we would give them the hundred dollars off for each one, so.
So they're paying fifty more dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the second, then a hundred and twenty-eight, but I mean, two twenty-eight would go down to a hundred and twenty-eight.
Yeah.
I think that would still get their attention.
Yeah. I think it would.
I'll be really good when I get my first ticket.
Well, and a lot of people send emails not understanding that if you pay within the ten days. So is that? How is that noticed on the ticket? Is it really bright? So they understand it or?
I don't know if it's really bright. I'll bring, I'll bring what the ticket says when I bring the, the, the.
Just give us all a ticket out there.
Sample.
Fake ticket. Uh, when, when we, when we first started the um, uh. The program, we gave my attorney Brad Jepson a fake ticket to make sure it would work. And um, it worked out so well that it actually went to collections. Like the system is so automated that it actually went to collections and you got a call. Sorry, Brad. So anyway, all right, okay, well, we'll bring it with, with, as it is with those changes we discussed and uh see where it goes from there.
Okay. We have everything this time? Sorry, I let him go before you were finished, Don.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, now council calendars.
It's Rowing Meadows. I'm gonna be at Rowing Meadows on the ninth. It wasn't on the calendar.
On the ninth of November?
They're having a fifty-year celebration that the mayor can't make the decision, she can't speak again.
We'll get it on. And I didn't see any my, any of my hometown events. Have they not been, are they not having any for the fall and winter?
Service day.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I looked on this calendar. I didn't see in advance for the holiday recitals or anything.
I'll find out to see if there are any, but as far as I know, everything should be on there, but we'll double check tomorrow to make sure.
Okay. Hey, any other concerns on that one? Oh, and. Councilman Fitzimano is with us. I don't know what time he joined, but you noticed it? Okay, thank you. All right, I would like to ask that we hold the potential future agenda items until after our closed meeting. Does anybody have a ju- objection to that?
So.
So it come back.
So.
We come back to that, yeah, come back into. A study session. Okay, and then council reports. Okay. Looking up there. Okay, seeing none. Um, we do have need for a closed session or. A person's character and competency or help. Is there anyone that would like to make that motion?
We also need another.
Okay.
Ma'am, that's for potential or. Uh, reasonably pending litigation.
Okay, so those two items.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Oh no, we'll call both, please. Councilman Fitzimano.
Hi.
Councilman Westone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Hi.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norville?
Yes.
Maryling?
Yes.
Social council unanimous. Okay. We will get five minutes.